Okay, it is past the hour of seven o'clock, February 28th, 2023. My name is Paul Tagliferi. I am the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals of Northborough. This open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June 16th, 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the zoning board of appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the ZBA to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair knows otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going through Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Rutan?
Here.
Fran Backstrand?
Here.
Brad Blanchett?
Here.
Suzie Says Lika?
Here.
Jeff Grabowski?
Here.
And I think Jeff Leland will be joining. Wait. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Yeah.
Robert Federico?
Here.
Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Okay, so for presenters and applicants listening to the agenda, the Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make your presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when speaking, when not speaking, and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until a floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by a roll call vote. For members who, for items of public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. By phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by Chair. Please note that part of your phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, please click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to identify, who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Okay, so first up on the agenda is to consider the petition of American Sign, Inc. on behalf of TJX Companies for a variance for a new wall sign and under canopy sign totaling 206.5 square feet, which exceed the allowable maximum sign area of 100 square feet. Applicable property is located at 9106-9114 Shops Way, Sierra, MAP 106, parcel 7.3 in the industrial zoning district. And I believe Heather Duttco. Hey, Jeff. Cleveland, how's it going?
Good. Thanks, Paul. Nice to see you.
Okay, Heather, can you hear me?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, Heather. How's it going?
Hi, good. How are you?
Doing well.
It was a good evening for a Zoom meeting, huh?
Yes, for sure.
It worked out great.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I guess, you know, if you could just kind of give an overview of your case and what it is that you're looking for for this petition.
Okay, great. For the record, my name is Heather Duttco, 27, Old Meeting House Road in Auburn, Mass. And I'm representing American Sign and TJX Companies for this petition. So this petition is similar to the ones that you've heard, I think it was last June. It's another tenant for TJX up at the Plaza at Shops Way. This particular tenant, Sierra, is on the other side of the Plaza on the side where Wegmans is. And there'll be several tenants that are non-existent there and they're reconfiguring the space for the Sierra space. They are requesting a wall sign at 204 square foot and an under canopy sign at 2.5 square foot. After the remodel of the building, I calculated their frontage facade at about 3,900 square feet. So the size that they're proposing is consistent with other signage in the Plaza for the large tenants like Home Goods and Marshalls and Wegmans. And it will just help to ensure that, you know, customers, new customers know that they're there and it's, if they're on the other side of the Plaza, they can easily identify the building. And if they're walking, the under canopy sign absolutely helps to identify the tenant space there. So that's pretty much what we have.
Okay. I guess, staff, is there anything that you guys have for comments or questions with regards to this case? Bob?
Yeah, thank you. Just as a background information, the maximum size for a wall sign in that particular area is 100 square feet, which is part of the site plan decision when the shops, shopping area went in about 15, 20 years ago. So like the, the store is called Sierra. It's a TJX company. They are taking out four or five smaller stores that have left, and they're going to renovate all those smaller spaces into one big area. There are currently two building permits issued for the demolition and the rebuilding of that space. So that's, that's the background information on that, on that section of the shops.
So as Bob did mention, the variance, the code allows for one wall sign up to 100 square feet. So we are asking for in excess of square footage for the wall sign and for second sign. So the variance is two, two items.
Okay. And so that's kind of where the 206 comes from?
Yes, added together.
The wall sign and the 2.5, okay.
Yeah.
And so just to confirm, all the signage will be sort of on the front of the building, i.e. facing out towards the parking lot. There won't be any signs on the side or the rear of the building.
Correct.
Are there any other questions from staff?
I have no concerns or questions about this application.
I guess I'll open it up to the other members of the board. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the applicant? Fran?
Hi, thank you very much. I just have a quick question. Up there in the Plaza, there are what I would call flags that are on the street poles that show people when they're walking. Are those specific to the stores or are they, are they part of the Northborough Crossing? Because they do tell you the different stores and do they count as signage for the different stores?
That's not anything in our scope, so I defer to Bob on that, if that's something that's the Plaza takes care of. Good.
Yeah, that's something the Plaza takes care of and it's not within the scope of this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other members of the board? Brad?
Yeah, quick question. And I've asked this with all the shops, especially TJX, because you guys are building a second home away from home in Northborough Crossing. Does this match and/or fit the current branding for Sierra for every other sign, signage that you have in any other store?
Yeah, for this size building and for the size tenant space, it's 99% consistent with all their other signs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Suzie?
And to build upon that, this might be a question more for Bob. And I think he has the last go around for the other stores as well. Is this kind of the same size as like the TJ Maxx sign down the way and the Wegmans sign? And then the signs that we approved in June across the parking lot?
Yes, it's pretty, it's consistent with that. They're actually, I just wanted to see what the letter height was here.
I meant to grab the files from before, but
That's okay. Oh, I just can't find the letter height. Yeah, they're consistent with the TJ Maxx and the Marshalls.
So it's not going to be like extra giant compared to the other signage up there?
No, no. So their letter size there is six foot, which is, which is consistent with what the other stores are for TJ Maxx.
Yeah, so I think just looking at the old case, the wall sign for Home Goods is approximately 200 square feet. Are there any other questions from the board? All right, this is a public hearing. Fran, just FYI, you have your hand raised on the Zoom meeting, but assume you're good. So if you are logged into this call, if you could please raise your hand on the Zoom meeting or dial star nine by phone, then we could take public comment. Okay, so I don't see any other public comment. I don't know if anyone else on the board sees anything else. One last go around from staff or anyone else on the board for any questions or comments with regards to this case? Is it?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second the motion.
So Brad made a motion and Mark's, sorry, Fran. So we will do a roll call vote for the closing of the case. Brad?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Now I'm an a as well. All right. Thank you, Heather. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next, the next hearing is to consider the petition of Hosokawa Alpine American, Inc. for a special permit to extend a non-conforming use and structure relative to proposed addition of 4,500 square feet of warehouse space and associated improvements for the property located at 455 Whitney Street, MAP 15, parcel 13 in the industrial zoning district. And I believe we have Brian Falk on for this. Brian, if you can hear me?
Yeah, we're here. Thank you.
Hey, Brian, how's it going? Is there anyone else that needs to be moved as a, to a panelist for this meeting or is it just yourself?
We have our whole team here with me. If I, do you want me to make introductions or if you've got more to do?
Nope, nope. I just want to make sure that we have everyone on the, on the Zoom call right now, but so I guess if you want to just start and just, you know, you know, go over through your case, give an overview and everything, that'd be great.
Sure. So Brian Falk from Iroquois O'Connell here on behalf of the applicant Hosokawa Alpine American. With me here in the room is Ben McNally from Alpine.
Hello.
Chris Ryan from Meridian Engineering and Neil Cruthers from Mills Construction. If anyone, we've, we've got a desk mic here. If anyone has any trouble hearing us, please just let us know. We'll, we'll speak up as best we can. So this application is for 455 Whitney Street. That's right on the Berlin line, right as you cross into Northborough. We're located in the industrial district and also the groundwater protection district, area three. We're seeking a Section 6 special permit to add a 400, 4,500 square foot addition to the existing 22,000 square foot building on the site. The building has been there since 1973. The site really hasn't changed much since that time and has hosted a series of light manufacturing uses, which is what I use category is. Alpine bought the property in 2018 and the use is sales and service for blown film extrusion systems, which are used primarily in the medical packaging industry. The machines that we have are manufactured in Germany and then sent to Northborough. At the site, the company keeps and ships the machines, does some light assembly and dry runs to make sure things work. But the actual blowing and creation of films takes place at customer locations that we serve from the Northborough location. So our addition is off of the existing building along the rear of the property line. And it's designed entirely for warehouse and storage space. Our manufacturing use will not change at all. The site will just have more room for warehouse and storage. As our, as our operations have increased and sales have increased, we need more room for warehousing and storage. There will be no increase in employees at the site or additional traffic because the use is staying the same. We're just going to have more space indoors for storage and warehousing. The addition will be screened by existing mature vegetation that's on the site right now, which provides a good amount of screening from neighboring residential area just over the Berlin line along Alden Drive. So in terms of legal standards for this application, the building in sight, as was mentioned, are pre-existing non-conforming with respect to the rear setback. An addition like this would ordinarily require a variance, but the zoning bylaw allows by Section 6 finding special permit for the extension of a setback non-conformity like this. The rear setback requirement is 25 feet. Our existing building is about 20.9 feet off the line and the addition would be between 22 and 24 feet. So extending that non-conformity, but not making it worse, which is allowed by the zoning bylaw through a Section 6 finding special permit. Our use is also pre-existing non-conforming light manufacturing use because we predate the 2020 additions of the zoning bylaw, which requires special permits for this type of use. We predate that requirement, so a modification of our use goes to this board, the ZBA, for a Section 6 finding special permit. We're also pre-existing non-conforming on parking. We have 29 spaces. We would need 54 with the addition. We're providing 45, so an increase of six. But we're comfortable that this is sufficient because we're not adding staff. And we'll also, through this addition, we'll be able to eliminate the need for storage trailers, which are on the site from time to time, currently holding some of our storage needs. So in granting this kind of special permit, the board has to make the finding that this change is for a similar or less non-conforming use and that the change is not substantially more detrimental or different in character than the current use to the neighborhood. We believe the project meets that standard. This is a 22% increase in building size. It's screened from our neighbors and there's no increase in staff and the use will remain exactly the same as it is now, just with additional warehouse and storage capacity. I spoke with a few of our neighbors on Alden Drive in Berlin. They had some concerns about our plans and certainly want to maintain or enhance the screening that's there now that shields their view from our site. And we've offered and will accept as conditions certain improvements to benefit those neighbors. Those would be planting arborvitae screening along the property line to increase the existing vegetated screening, having downward facing lighting to minimize light spill over and some drainage enhancements to minimize runoff from our parking area onto neighboring, neighboring property. And we're working with the town engineer on some additional water quality improvements from the, from the parking area. In terms of staff comments, we reviewed the planning director's letter and we can offer the following. The comment number one, we are, we are okay with adding evergreen trees in the north corner of the property to add additional screening for our neighbors, as I mentioned. There's a reference to an addition of a stockade fence to help shield the parking area. We're, we're okay with that. That's the board's pleasure, but we might suggest that additional arborvitae and evergreens might actually be more effective in terms of screening, screening the area and also creating a more pleasant view for our neighbors. But again, we defer to the board on that. On number two, we're okay with the condition limiting any clearing of vegetation beyond the erosion control sock that's shown on sheet C3. On comment number three, we will work with our building manufacturer to get a facade or elevation drawing. There are some construction drawings that we filed with the application that give you an idea of what the building will look like, but we will see if our manufacturer has some elevations or photos of the same building in other locations. And then on number four, we are working to provide a photometric plan to add to the, to the site plan. As you may have read, this project also requires site plan approval and a groundwater protection district special permit from the planning board. So in addition to this special permit, we will have additional review and additional conditions of approval from the planning board for the project. Just wrapping up, we believe the board may make the required legal finding to issue this special permit with the conditions that we discussed. Thank you for your time and we're happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. So just a quick question. Can you just confirm the parking calculation you stated earlier? How many you have currently? How many you're going to and what's the required amount?
Yeah, we currently have 29. The required amount with the addition would be 54 and we're going to be providing 45. So we're increasing it by six.
That's 16 now.
I'm sorry?
I think even 35 there. We're going up to 35.
I'm sorry, you're right. We're going, sorry, correct me. We're going up to 35, not 45, going up to 35.
Okay, so you're going from 29 to 35, but you're required 54?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Fred, can we start with you and the groundwater letter that you provided, if that's okay?
Sure. Good evening. The groundwater advisor committee met last week to review the application. The letter that I presented to Lori to give to you all tonight is addressed to the planning board because they're issuing the site plan, the special permit for groundwater, but I wanted you to be aware of the discussions that we had. The applicant had indicated on his application that there were no toxic or hazardous materials and I had wanted to confirm that. And they were nice enough to let me tour the building with Ben McNally and Brian this afternoon. And we did discover that there was a Flemables cabinet, Flemables storage cabinet onsite that isn't being used and was left over from a previous building that they occupied. It's actually on a pallet and it looks like it's just got moved there and it hasn't been used. They've agreed to remove that prior to the occupancy permit being issued. And so that is one of the conditions that I'm recommending that the planning board add to the approval if they so desire. The applicant is, he has a parking lot that was built, I believe, originally in 1977 or thereabouts. The drainage requirements are quite different now than they were back then. There actually is no drainage onsite in the existing parking lot. They are proposing drainage to satisfy the addition of the building that they're proposing. The 4,500 square foot addition is being captured in gutters and downspouts and will be recharged into the ground. So I've asked that they perform a couple of permeability tests just to verify that the soil, the, the rate at which the soils absorb the water can be confirmed onsite so that the design actually is, is doable. The applicant, as the attorney Falk indicated, it is pre-existing prior to the groundwater bylaw. And so therefore the building, the impervious area that's onsite is what we call grandfathered or protected as pre-existing. But I did ask that they would submit an impervious cover calculation sheet so that the building inspector can have it on file for any future expansion of the building or the parking area. And they have agreed. The existing parking lot, as I indicated, does not contain any drainage structures. So I had asked, because the parking lot looks like it's nearing the end of its useful life, they've indicated that once the addition is up, they will be repaving the parking lot. That would be an appropriate time for them to add some water quality features to the parking lot. One catch basin should handle it. Their engineer and I are going to work together to come up with a plan and try to include something in a decision that the planning board could approve. Or they will provide the design. We're not quite sure yet. We really just started talking about it last week at the groundwater meeting, but they are amenable to some improvements in terms of groundwater quality because they are right at the town line with Berlin. And the section of Berlin that's just beyond the property line is in their zone two aquifer protection area, which is similar to our zone one. So they are amenable to that. The, I asked that the engineer revise the plan to include some information about the water line in Whitney Street, which he's agreed to, some modifications to the long-term operation and maintenance plan. Final set of plans is being required once all the changes are added to the plan. And that, that plan, that set of plans would have the same revision date on all plans submitted to the town. So each board that's issues a permit will have a current set of plans and they will, will all be working off the same set of plans once they go to construction. The applicant needs to verify the adequacy of the septic system. I understand from my conversation today that they already did provide a plan to the Board of Health, which I believe has been approved. We just need confirmation from the Health Director that that is the case and that it does account for the additional building size. Even though it's warehouse, there is a minimal amount of flow that will be, the, the septic system needs to be designed to handle. The rest, the next condition really is about the typical as-built plan and all the requirements of that. And then I had a couple of comments based upon the site plan that are not really pertinent to the groundwater special permit, but they're important for the DPW Director and I to make sure that they're, they're on there. The one is the water privilege fee for the expansion of the building is $1,400 and that will be due at the, prior to the issuance of the building permit. The applicant will be required to get an earthwork permit from the Earthwork Board. The applicant may be required to get a road opening and a permit depending on if there are changes made to where the driveway intersects with Whitney Street. I know that there were some comments in Lori's memo that may preclude them from doing that without a road opening permit. And I also suggested that they put some screening around the dumpster pad, whether it's a fence, a stockade fence or some arborvitae, some kind of plantings to kind of screen it on three sides would be appropriate. So I can answer any questions. I did send a letter to the applicant, so they are aware of all these. We did talk about it briefly at a, at my little tour today, so I think there are few, if any, questions.
Okay, thanks, Fred. I mean, it, it sounds like most of the groundwater conditions that are on this letter are related to the site plan approval, which obviously this case will have to go in front of the planning board, at which point the planning board can sort of address some of the specific conditions regarding that.
Yep.
But appreciate the letter and thanks for the recap. I guess Lori, if, if we kind of just want to give, so I, I think for the purposes of our, what's in front of us tonight, right? You know, this is a special permit with regards to, you know, the use, which this is a light manufacturing use, which if this was a new sort of application, right? Based on how our bylaws are written, this would go in front of the planning board. But because this is a pre-existing non-conforming use and the way our bylaws are written, this sort of is an extension of that and therefore comes in front of ZBA. So what's in front of us tonight is really a special permit on extending a non-conforming use of light manufacturing within the industrial zone, right?
Yes, as well as the special permit to extend the non-conforming building setback. Yes, as well as the special permit to extend the nonconforming building setback. So the rear setback currently of the building is violated. So what they're proposing to do with their addition is to also place the building in line with the the rear of the current building. So it would also be nonconforming, however, it wouldn't be more nonconforming than the existing structure.
Right, right. And that is that whole, currently it's twenty one feet away from the back line. And the new building will be twenty two and then based on the angle, twenty four feet from the back line, still not within the twenty five feet, but not any worse or closer to sort of the back line. But I I guess you know, so really for us for tonight, it's the the extending the use and then the building nonconformity with regards to the criteria listed for a special permit. So the site plan comments that you have, even though they are useful, is more of a planning board purview for their meeting in whatever it is, a couple of weeks. So I I guess, do you want to just just give a recap of some of the comments that you had? I mean, I know you had listed sort of the adding the sort of the arboretum, you know, I I think at least for me, the concern of having a buffer there for the neighbors that are are behind or to the east of the property is is important. But I guess you want to just give sort of an overview of the comments you had submitted specifically for the ZBA filing?
Sure. So pertaining to the screening of the abutting residential properties, the reason why I was also proposing a six foot tall stockade fence is really the area of the level spreader. So they're proposing to clear some of the existing buffer, vegetated buffer in order to construct a level spreader, which will accommodate the drainage from the parking lot. So the concern that I have is already in the area where the level spreader is proposed. The vegetation is pretty sparse. So when they clear existing vegetation to make way for the level spreader, then there really isn't going to be much room to plant arboretum. Unless you pretty much take out all of the existing vegetation in the area of the level spreader. So rather than do that, my suggestion for the area, the level spreader is to install that is six foot stockade fence. Where there's plenty of room behind the addition and in the area, the infiltration basin. I think that the the arboretum is probably the best solution. Certainly, the arboretum will grow a lot taller than a six foot stockade fence. My suggestion is that at the time of planting, the bushes should be eight feet tall. So that should really fill in and provide a really nice screen via butters. I did also propose some conditions that, of course, Brian Falk had already mentioned when he was going through my review letter. One, of course, is a requirement that the applicant go before the planning board for site plan approval and the special special permit for groundwater overlay district area three prior to construction activities. We did receive a letter from the fire chief and he had some suggestions for conditions of approval. So letter B of my draft conditions had to do with fire suppression services and connections being compliant with the building code and the Northborough Fire Department requirements. The fire department is specifically interested in having the applicant demonstrate that there is sufficient flow to support expansion of the sprinkler system into the addition. So I I put that in the condition. First, we already went over the submission of the facade and elevation drawings. In particular, I am interested in having those drawings include not only the addition, but also the original building. So I want to see what the addition will look like in the context of the original building. So that's my suggestion there. Of course, there was the discussion about the LED lighting or energy efficient lighting and ensuring that there's going to be no spillover to the residential butters and the no clearing of vegetation beyond the erosion control sock. So that pretty much handles all of my concerns. And of course, there are a whole bunch of other concerns that are for the planning board, but for the ZBA, that pretty much does it.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can let them figure that out. So I guess just sticking with staff, are there any other staff comments or questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. So I guess just just one question or a couple of questions I have. So with regards to the use, right, light manufacturings, how you guys listed, what is your typical hours of operation?
Eight thirty to five.
At the property. Eight thirty to five?
Yeah.
Okay. And so
How many days a week? Monday through Friday.
Okay. And so for the deliveries that get that come in, I assume on sort of an eighteen wheeler or some sort of freight truck. How often do you estimate deliveries on a weekly or monthly basis?
I would say we probably have twenty to about twenty trucks a week is my estimate.
Okay. And so just driving by the property, there was several trucks parked outside in the parking lot. Is sort of the goal to not have those there and this is replacing sort of that storage of whatever's there?
Absolutely, those trucks are there strictly for storage, storage needs and this building will certainly alleviate that for the foreseeable future and we don't have, we don't, our goal is to not have them there anymore, yes.
Okay. I guess opening up to other members of the board, does anyone have any questions for the applicant or staff? Okay. Suzie?
I had one. So you, when you had said about the restriping of the the parking lot in that that would be after you repave it and you're not enlarging the parking lot or you might enlarge it after the drainage, the re-drainage or the new drainage portion comes in. Is the parking lot expanding? I'm looking at the the drawing of the parking.
No, the the parking lot is going to stay. We're not adding any impervious area to the parking lot. And any drainage measures that the city engineer and we are able to agree on would be installed within the limits of the existing parking lot.
Okay. And then the re, and then the trucks that are, that you just spoke of will become the parking spots because they don't need to be there anymore.
Correct.
As well, okay.
Okay, are there any other members of the board that have questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. If you are on the call via Zoom, please raise your hand. Or if you are dialed in, please dial star nine. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience with a hand raised at this particular time. Someone on the board could just keep me honest, confirm that they don't see hands raised. Does anyone know? Okay. All right, are there any other questions for the applicant or staff from the board? So are there any other questions for comments from the staff?
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, Fran made a motion to close the public hearing and Brad seconded, sorry Suzie. This will, we'll have a roll call vote, Fran. Brad?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. So I guess for today, we can start with Shop's Way, Sierra Trading Post. Anyone, Mark?
Mr. Chair, I think this is a straightforward proposal in line with everything else we've allowed up there in Shop's Way. It increases the safety and usability, the area by giving a clear signal across a massive parking lot as far as what store is located at this in this area. And saves confusion and traffic accidents and everything else we've, which are the reasons why we've had the approve the larger signs for the other properties. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Suzie?
I agree. It's in line with everything, same size, same, you know, it's just going to fit right in, not affecting any neighborhoods or anything as well. So fits right in with the building and everything else that's up there.
Okay, Brad?
Yeah, substantial harmony with what's going on out there and honestly, he really didn't have to show up to give a presentation. I mean, it's a no brainer. You know what I mean? It's like this is complete substantial harmony with what's going on up there. Doesn't affect any residential neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, it's a no brainer.
Okay. I mean, yeah, we we approved cases similar to this in the past. I think the other signs were between two hundred and two hundred and five square feet and this is two hundred and six point five, doesn't seem like this is any different. There are no signs going on the back or the sides, which is consistent with everything else that's up there. Do I hear a motion? Mark?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve a variance to allow the signage for the property at ninety one oh six to ninety one fourteen Shop's Way to increase from a hundred square feet to two hundred and ten square feet and to be distributed across two signs at that location.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mark and a second from Suzie. We will have a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Easy enough.
Can I just ask, Mark, did you say two hundred and ten square feet?
I went to two hundred and ten, figuring, give him a little leeway. You know, at a two hundred some square feet, giving him an extra three and a half is just yeah, in case something funny happens with a period at the end or so whatever.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and and so I mean TJX, they're pretty stringent on brand and so like there's they're they're not going to decide to go crazy on a sign in Northborough versus Framingham or anywhere else.
I also feel that they they're already invested in several stores up there. They're not going to, you know, destroy their own location and look with something that's at place.
Yeah, it's going to be the new Shopper's World. They're going to have, TJX is going to have pretty much every store that they own up in Northborough Common or Crossing or whatever, whatever it's called now. You know, it's like they're all going to be up there.
Okay, yeah, that that's fine. So I guess then moving on to four fifty five Whitney, so just kind of just recapping some of what Lori had stated in her letter, you know, basically what's in front of us today is you know, it's it's a nonconforming use in that if they were to try to do this use today, you know, they would have to just go in front of the the planning board for a special permit, but because it's, they've already existed. After the twenty twenty meeting, it is, it comes to us for the, to to extend the grandfathering of the special use or special permit of the use and then obviously the nonconforming of the building, which is built in nineteen seventy. So we're specifically looking for us at the extension of the use and then the the property or the building as well. Does anyone want to go first on this one or? Fran?
Well, I mean, I think that it is a reasonable addition to their current location. It is in our industrial area, so I I think it fits. I think we do have to give a variance on the not enough parking spaces or is that right, in addition to the extension of the not conforming, but I mean, light manufacturing is about as best you're going to get in an industrial area.
Actually, they don't need a variance because the site plan review regulations authorize the planning board to issue a reduction in the required number of spaces. So instead of doing a variance, they can get that approval through the site plan approval process.
Oh, perfect, okay. And and they were amenable to the conditions that you drafted. Lori, as far as the the few different items, right?
Yes, it's my understanding based on the comments received this evening from the applicant.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I I guess just kind of basing it off of Lori's letter, there's a lot more stuff to review for the planning board than there is for us in terms of the turning radius, I mean, even the groundwater letter that Fred went over, that's really all under the planning boards purview for this application. But I figured it's obviously good for us to hear and provide any comments on it. Mark, did you have your hand raised or?
I was just, Lori, I assume the stockade fence was your your kind of take on what they need to screen this. How many linear feet of stockade fence does this end up being? Just rough. I mean, are we talking thirty feet, fifty feet?
I have the plan right here, so just bear with me a minute while I look at it.
Yeah. And I I guess my fear and and whatever is that if if the building is deserted and the stockade fence starts decaying with no servicing of it, does the screening end up covering it over for the neighbors so that they, you know, in ten years are are out in the clear? Or do they look at an ugly stockade fence in twenty years?
So the, so the area of the level spreader is approximately sixty feet.
Okay.
So that is the area where I was concerned that once they clear the vegetation to make way for the level spreader, there's just not going to be enough space without clearing the balance of the vegetation. So you know, pretty much the vegetation that exists So, you know, pretty much the vegetation that exists there is all deciduous. So at this time of year, there are no leaves on the trees.
Right.
But I defer to you folks, if you think it's better to just put a string of arborvitae all the way along the border there or whether the combination of the stockade fence and the arborvitae are preferred.
And I guess my feeling is I defer to your professional opinion here, but okay. Other board members may disagree.
I think just my quick opinion on this is that I would, I would like some sort of buffer, whether it's a combination of stockade fence and arborvitae's or eight foot arborvitae's all the way around. I mean, you know, having driven through the neighborhood behind there, you can sort of envision what the additional building would look like and just to provide some sort of a buffer, I think would be useful. Fran, I think you had your hand up first.
So I would have to say just from personal experience, arborvitae's are a great barrier. If you put a stockade fence up against them, eventually they outgrow the fence and then they are heavily one-sided, lopsided when the fence starts to fail. So if they're decent sized trees to start with, the arborvitae's on their own give a beautiful buffer, but not wedged either.
Okay, thank you, Fran. Brad?
Yes, I mean, regardless of whether it's a stockade fence or arborvitae's, I know this part of town has been very controversial. And any way that we can put up a buffer zone between industrial versus residential, even though we're residential, may not be part of Northborough, we want to be good neighbors. And the fact that we haven't seen or heard or a lot of brushback on this specific application, I think anything we can do to be good neighbors, I think is beneficial. And would help continue to, what am I trying to say? You know, impact any, any type of development in that part of town. I know, because again, it abuts residential, but anything we can do to separate the two, I think would go a long way.
Okay, thanks, Red. Suzie?
Um, I think they even said that they kind of interviewed the residents back there and they preferred a buffer to be put in. And we could require that they're planted a little farther, so maybe they don't get those bald spots that were, you know, that can happen. The one thing that I thought of when I thought of the stockade fence is that it could prevent a little bit of soundproofing as well. You know, like you're driving along some highway sometimes and you do see like the wooden fences kind of like blocking, you know, the sound of traffic. So that might help because, you know, you buy on a cul-de-sac, having a family, you kind of, you know, even though you're, you're abutting in an industrial district, you know, you kind of want that quieter neighborhood feel, so that might be kind of nice too. But if they were, if they were open to it, you know, it might be, might be nice. Those are just my thoughts on it.
Well, a follow-up question though, if it's a stockade fence and the trees, which goes on the abutter side? Does the fence go behind the trees or do the trees go behind the fence?
So what I was thinking is that in the area of the level spreader, they would maintain the existing deciduous vegetation along that location. And then the arborvitae's would not be planted with the stockade fence. They would be planted in the other location. So behind the addition as well as adjacent to the proposed infiltration basin. So there would be no fence in that location. Just arborvitae's.
I like the fence then for the neighborhood.
Okay. Are there any other? So I think I just want to confirm or just go through. So Lori had sent out sort of the draft decision for this case, and I just want to make sure that everyone agrees before we vote on this, just the, just the different conditions. So the first one is basically, you know, they'll secure all the necessary permits and approvals from the site plan, from the planning board, which I think seems pretty straightforward. The fire suppression services, I think is pretty straightforward from the fire department. Is that just something, Lori, is that something that like the, before the building is built, that they'll have to prove the pressure is there or does that work?
Prior to issuance of a building permit. So, yeah, this is a standard condition that usually appears in the planning board decisions. But because of the fire department's concern about the flow, I thought I'd include it here.
Okay. Bob, yeah?
Unmuted, okay. Prior to the building permit issuance, the fire department is required to do a flow test or have a flow test done to make sure there's sufficient flow, both in terms of volume and pressure for the, for the sprinkler system upgrade.
Okay. And the plan obviously is this building will have a sprinkler in there, so I think that's a good thing. So then they'll submit a facade elevation joint for the planning board review. And then, okay, the six foot tall stockade fence, Lori, do you have, so when you, so when you say, so are you saying for the, the fence will be along sort of the northeast side and then the arborvitae's will be sort of in the back?
Yeah, so if you look at sheet C 2.0, you'll see the limit of the existing vegetation along that residential property line. And you see that they are planning on cutting into that in order to put the level spreader there. So they're, they're taking a thin vegetated buffer and making it a lot thinner.
Okay.
That, that is my concern because another plan is one inch equals 20 feet.
Yep.
So that buffer is about less than 10 feet wide once they clear it. So there's just not a lot of space unless they're just gonna go ahead and remove all the existing vegetation. But there are some taller trees in that strip that I was interested in saving because of course during the growing season, those would provide, I would think, a bit of a buffer with the height. So the arborvitae's would go at the end of that stretch of the level spreader and could be placed also behind the addition, kind of if they're kitty cornered to obscure the view. So I'd like to see them update the landscape plan to show proposed locations that then the planning board could approve.
Okay. So I think just so I'm understanding, right, so where these five parking spaces or four parking spaces are gonna go on the northeast side of the drawings? And where this proposed level spreader, that is where, that is where the six foot stockade fence will go, right?
Yes, that's my proposal.
And then north of that area where the, you know, parking lot ends is where the arborvitae's will start. And then, you know, sort of go towards sort of the end or north, northernmost line of the thing. So basically the fence.
I don't think they have to go all the way along the back property line. Because that property line is shared with another industrial use that is actually, it's an industrial property that is unoccupied. So the residential use is really what you're trying to screen.
Right. So basically, I mean, you'll just have a stockade fence but sort of near that parking lot because you won't have enough room for eight foot arborvitae's, which I assume require several feet of space. So you have a stockade fence and then arborvitae's will continue on past that point.
Yes, that's my, that's my thought.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I don't have, yeah.
Can I just make a suggestion? I'm looking at the plan and I'm wondering why the parking spaces near the level spreader are offset by the other parking spaces as they head out towards Whitney Street by about 35 feet. There might be an opportunity for them to pull that parking, those parking spaces away and not have to cut into those trees in order to build the level spreader unless there's some, I think that's where the trailers are parked right now. And if the trailers aren't necessary, it's always a good idea from groundwater to reduce the amount of pavement. If, since you've already closed a hearing, maybe I would suggest that you could word the language around the stockade fence to allow some flexibility that if they were able to reduce the pavement and pull that level spreader away from the tree line, they might be able to avoid the stockade fence or accommodate both more efficiently without taking out any trees. I think they probably, their engineer didn't show a lot of creativity and just put the level spreader off the edge of the parking lot now, leaving everything just the way it is, but that, there's no, I can't see any reason right now why those spaces are need to be offset by 35 feet from the other spaces as you drive in from Whitney Street. If they were shifted up and the dumpster was moved to closer to the building, it might allow them to accommodate everything that we want, reduce some pavement and leave the, as many trees as possible, maybe even not touch the tree line. But we need the condition to be flexible to allow them to change that as long as it doesn't, you know, eliminate any parking spaces, obviously.
How about I change the language too? The applicant shall enhance the vegetated buffer where abutting residentially occupied properties along the Berlin Town Line. The proposed location and design of screening shall be submitted to the planning board for their review and approval as part of the site plan review special permit application.
That could work. Speaking for all of you. Sorry about that.
That's all right. I mean, I think generally speaking, I think, I mean, anyone can raise their hand, but protecting sort of the residential zone from sort of the nuisance and noise and light from, you know, this extension is the goal, right? Whether it's arborvitae's, stockade fence, if it can't fit arborvitae's or whatever the case is, is sort of the end goal. And so, you know, if we want to wordsmith that so that it gives you guys or the planning board flexibility so that when they go to the planning board, they can provide a more concrete plan of specifically, this is what we can do. And then the planning board having site plan approval can sort of deal with it. But I think generally speaking, I don't want to speak for anyone here. Our goal is to sort of just allow some protection between the building and the neighbors so that the nuisances reduced.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chair, yeah, so that was, that was my, my feedback. I know my comment was a little long-winded, but that's exactly what I'm trying to get at.
Okay. Is that, shaking?
I'm also in agreement with that. That is where we want to go.
Yeah.
Okay. So even though it's not specifically a six foot tall stockade fence, but I think we, we are all on the same page and Lori, I guess we'll just figure out how to word that so that it's, it gives us, us and the applicant flexibility to to figure that out. And then the next one is just a dark sky compliant lighting. Just so that we can, you know, see and make sure that they have a photometric plan for the planning board to review that there's not a spotlight shining into the neighbors down next door. All right. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions or comments with regards to this case? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I think Mark does.
Okay.
Seems like it's gonna be a lot.
I have the lower tolerance. Okay, I move that we grant a special permit for the, for extending the non-conformance use for a 4,500 square foot extension of this building at 455 Whitney Street with the conditions that Lori has outlined in her proposal and as we have amended here.
Lori?
Can you just mention the two special permits here? So the first one is a special permit to extend or alter the non-conforming use. And then the second one is the special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure. So if you could just expand the motion to include those two.
I would include both of them, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Second.
Okay, Mark made a motion and Fran seconded. So we'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. Let's see. So next up is the consideration of minutes for the December 2nd 2022 meeting and the January 24th, 2023 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Is there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the December 2nd, 2022 and?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for the December 2nd, 2022 and January 24th, 2023 minutes as submitted.
Second. Fran made a motion to approve the minutes for the December and January meetings. Brad seconded. Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Suzie?
Can I vote if I was not at the January meeting? I can. Yeah, aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. So our next meeting is March 28th. Lori, are there, do you know, are there any cases currently submitted for the March meeting?
No, we haven't received anything as of yet.
Okay. Did we pass the deadline or have not passed the deadline yet?
I, I am actually not sure if we passed the deadline.
Okay.
Usually, usually it's about three weeks in advance of the next meeting, so we might still have a couple of days left.
Gotcha.
There was one, there was one gentleman who inquired yesterday about getting in for a a variance on the side yard setback, and I know he was gonna try to get on for March 28th because the board's not gonna meet in April if it's possible. He wanted to try to squeeze it in if he could, but.
Mr. Chair, I have the schedule here.
Yep.
Filing deadline is today for the March 28th meeting. And the gentleman that Fred was speaking about did not bring forth an application. I just contacted him this morning, so I wasn't expecting him to come over with one in about six hours.
Okay. So I guess then we may not have a meeting for the March 28th, unless otherwise. So I guess then we may not have a meeting for the March twenty-eighth, unless otherwise. Um. But I, I guess we can figure that out later. Um, does anyone else, does anyone have anything else, um? That they would like to bring up? Fran, do you have any updates from the master plan implementation committee or? Downtown?
Well.
Business or downtown neighborhood?
Well, the master plan implementation committee did meet, I mean, they were working with the consultants, it's moving along nicely. I mean, if Lori, Lori put together a really. Great comprehensive letter that I believe is going to the Board of Selectmen. Um. At outlining it, the steps that we're moving forward and, and what it actually means to. Move forward on a revitalization of the downtown. If it's something that she's able to share with all of you, I mean, it really does do a really good job of explaining. How long, how much, both time, energy, and money it's gonna cost, but it is really a, a great comprehensive, um. Letter.
Hmm.
I'd be happy to share that with all of you. And, and also I just wanted to update you on the, uh, zoning. Uh, planning related warrant articles. Uh, the public hearing was extended to the March seventh meeting. The planning board has been bogged down with. A, a reband of zero and three oh one Bartlett Street. Um, so unfortunately, we weren't able to get to that topic at our last planning board meeting, so it was continued. Uh, so if anybody has any last minute feedback that they want to share with the planning board. Please submit that for the March seventh meeting. And it's my understanding that the warrant closes on March thirteenth, so we'll be getting in right onto the wire.
Okay. Um. Does anyone else have any? Does anyone have anything else that they wanna bring up? Uh, Suzie?
I'll just do a quick plug. It's kindness week and we have a coffee hour with, uh, Chief Libber tomorrow at one o'clock at the Senior Center. And we have a coffee hour with Mitch Cohen, our select board chair at Selee Vee on, at eleven o'clock, I believe, on Thursday. And kindness in the common if, uh, the weather permits on Friday at four, so bring your kids. Or yourselves and we're decorating luminary bags and, um, giving out cocoa. And Fran joined us today with, um. Back in Meekins and yesterday we had Chief Parenti, so, and at Bollywood workshop, a dance workshop that I attended earlier today, which was. Uh, so much fun, so. Just wanted to plug that, cause it, it grew so much from last year and we had so much fun, so. We're gonna even try to do, um, more next year. In our website, the PTOs all have different drives and Northborough Rec has an animal drive going and. There's a drive for UMass's, um, for the children's hospital, for board books and toys for them and. There's so much stuff on our website, so please check it out, but. Uh, I'll just do a plug for that, so thank you.
Awesome, great stuff.
Excellent. It's awesome.
Then I would kindly like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Great. Our friend made a motion. Suzie seconded. Um. Roll call vote, Fran?
Hi.
Suzie?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Look at that, like the, big Major League Baseball with the pitch clock.
Under an hour and a half.